All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your God bless, please bless our elected officials, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Barra. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Ziarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager. Our city manager is out tonight, so we have our assistant city manager, Jeff Bohorski, filling in. Mr. Bohorski.
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to be with you tonight. I promise this will be a relatively short city manager's report. So first, with the July 4th holiday rapidly approaching, and this being the last council meeting before the celebration, wanted to advise everybody that city offices will be closed on Monday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. This will affect the City Hall, the Public Library, Community Center, Senior Center, Nature Center, DPW, and the Recycling Center, and the 41 District Court operations. It will be business as usual for all city offices on Tuesday, July 6th. It's important to note there will be no disruption of GFL collection schedules due to the July 4th holiday. Now, tonight, under consent agenda item 10K, the city council will designate for the first time a men's health month for June of 2021 in Sterling Heights. Because this will be the first time the city is taking such action, we thought it appropriate to bring some focus and attention to this important subject, and who better than our Parks and Recreation Director, Kyle Langloy, to introduce men's health month and how his department can play an integral role in promoting men's health in Sterling Heights. Mayor, if I could bring Kyle to the podium for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bohorski. Mr. Langloy.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and all gathered here tonight. Today, I stand before you with the purpose of introducing the resolution on tonight's consent agenda to declare June 2021 as men's health month in Sterling Heights. Although half of June is already over, the timing of my brief presentation this evening and the subsequent resolution is perfect, as this week is also known as International Men's Health Week as well. Even after decades of medical advancement, men's, men still have a shorter expected lifespan than women by five years, and a continued emphasis on regular medical checkups and living healthier lifestyles will hopefully close that gap in further and further over the next number of years. Tonight, I stand before you to briefly share the story of the city of Sterling Heights and the Parks and Recreation Department continuing to help make living a healthier lifestyle easy and convenient for the males in our community as well as all of our residents. The first area of focus I'd like to bring to everybody's attention is our park system and indoor facilities. With over 30 parks and green spaces found within our city limits, not including schools, and along with the Community Center, Nature Center, and Senior Center, a recreation area is within a short walking or biking distance from virtually every home in the city. Parks and green spaces, along with the three active buildings, bring tremendous physical and mental benefits, which are both critical for living healthier lifestyles. Our park system is ideal for enjoying personal fitness activities such as walking, biking, running, roller skating, kayaking, and more. No matter your fitness goals, these facilities can allow you the space and freedom to exercise at your own pace. In addition, our facilities provide various opportunities for individual team and athletic activities for all to enjoy, which come in the forms of leagues, instructional programs, and drop-in play. As part of our quest to continue to promote healthier lifestyles, Parks and Recreation Department is always striving to find new ways to bring healthy opportunities to our residents. Today, proud to announce that we will be hosting the Michigan Senior Olympic Events of badminton and volleyball this August for the first time ever. That is all because of the investment that we made in recreating recreation and having the spaces available for these types of activities. Our residents ages 50 and older, as well as participants from all over the state of Michigan, will have the opportunity to compete at our facilities showcasing their skills in the two athletic events. The second area of focus is our programs. For over five decades now, the Parks and Recreation Department has been providing value-driven programs for our residents to enjoy in their leisure time. From our little learners classes for our youngest male residents, to a plethora of fitness classes, to our citywide special events, to our programs at the Senior Center for our oldest male residents and all residents. Males in Sterling Heights can be part of activities that help them to reduce stress, enjoy time with family and old friends, make new friends, and focus on their own well-being. The last area to focus on are the education and services that are offered through the department. With many partnerships in place with area medical providers, the Parks and Recreation Department offers numerous lifelong learning classes focusing on living healthy lifestyles, managing chronic illnesses, dealing with grief, maintaining brain functioning, and so much more. In addition, services including but not limited to blood pressure checks, timely vaccination opportunities, CPR and first aid programs, blood drives round out the final area of focus for the men and women in our community. In closing, the Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Department strives to provide opportunities for all of our residents to live a healthier lifestyle, and especially men, as we sit today in the middle of International Men's Health Week. As seasons change and the department continues to grow, we want to make sure we draw attention to the resources that are available for the men and women of our great city, see what recreational offerings are available. We encourage everyone to read the City Magazine, 50+ Post, The Nature News, and The Sterling Special. Subscribe to our biweekly e-newsletter. Visit our website at www.myshpr.net, or follow us on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. While participating in Parks and Recreation activities may seem trivial, it is the collection of many small positive choices like this that can truly make a difference in our overall health and well-being throughout our lives. And as always, your Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Department is ready to make those small positive choices convenient and enjoyable. I want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce this resolution and promote some of the great programs, services, and facilities that we have to offer as we celebrate men's health month here in Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langloy. Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bohorski. Next item on our agenda is a presentation. We have two presentations tonight. The first is to acknowledge and accept a donation by Christian Financial Credit Union of $25,000 to sponsor the establishment of the new esports arena inside the Community Center Teen Room located at 402-50 Dodge Park Road. We have a presentation once again from our Parks and Recreation Director, Kyle Langloy. Mr. Langloy.
Thank you again. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be up here, and good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and all gathered here tonight. As I presented to you in April at the budget hearing, the Parks and Recreation Department is moving full steam ahead with the installation of an esports arena inside the teen room here in the Community Center. I want to first thank city council for approving this exciting and booming new initiative at that time, but also for approving the purchase of furniture a couple of weeks ago. That furniture has been ordered and is in production. The next steps now is finalize the specifications for the computers and get the equipment on order, with plans to open the esports arena in August or September, depending on how quickly the computers can be produced. Next, I want to thank the presenting sponsor of this new arena and one of our longtime partners, Christian Financial Credit Union. They have continued to work with us over the years to add value to the programs and services that we provide our residents. Christian Financial Credit Union has sponsored our major, major special events like Christmas and Halloween, has been the presenting sponsor for fireworks at our grand reopening and for Sterling Fest, and has also chosen to invest in our community with their business interests, including a branch on Shaner by Lakeside Mall and their headquarters at 15 Mile and Van Dyke. 2021, however, has marked a new chapter in their community investment in relation to the Parks and Recreation Department, as they have taken on two major sponsorships this year, including our first-ever ice rink sponsor taking effect in December when we open the ice rink. However, today, we are here to celebrate a highly impactful sponsorship and receive funds for the aforementioned esports arena. The contribution provided has allowed us to not compromise anything with this room. We don't have to compromise on our furniture, and we don't have to compromise on the quality of the computer equipment. These are two key factors in providing a top-level facility for gamers to enjoy, making them want to leave their living rooms and their homes to come interact with other gamers here in our Community Center. I would like to now turn the microphone over to the marketing manager of Christian Financial Credit Union, Ashley May, who's accompanied by Megan White for comments and to present the funds to city council.
Good evening to the city council members and to the Sterling Heights community here today. We thank you for inviting us to share the Sterling Heights. Sorry, thank you for inviting Christian Financial Credit Union to the Sterling Heights City Council meeting tonight. As Kyle had mentioned, my name is Ashley May and the marketing manager here at Christian Financial. One of our core philosophies is people helping people. What better way to exhibit this philosophy by investing into the community of Sterling Heights with an esports arena and teen room? Our hope is for young community, for the young community members of Sterling Heights to have a safe and fun place to meet with friends, study, and participate in e-gaming tournaments. For many years, Christian Financial Credit Union has partnered with the city of Sterling Heights to bring different programs, events, and events to Sterling Heights residences. We look forward to our continued partnership in the many years to come.
I believe in, true fashion, I don't know, Mayor, I believe you need to, council needs to accept this donation.
Absolutely. Council, if you'll join me, we'll go down there and accept the check and take a picture. (laughter) Thank you very much. Appreciate it. (applause) (laughter) 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 Okay, council, we do have a suggested action. Is there anyone who'd like to make that?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Ziarco.
To acknowledge and accept the donation by Christian Financial Credit Union of $25,000 to sponsor the establishment of the new esports arena inside the Community Center Teen Room.
It's been moved and supported.
Any discussion, council?
Thank you.
Just really quickly, through, through the chair too, Christian Financial, thank you very much. I'm a mother of four boys, and all of them are gamers. Granted, three of them are adults, well, they're all adults technically, but, so, but they would have loved this as teens, and I'm really happy that the teens in this community and the young adults can enjoy it. So, thank you very much.
Counsel, Mrs. Ziarco.
Yes. The only question that I have is, do we have any plans for the expansion of this esports arena? Because I don't think the teen room's going to be big enough, so, but that's all I have to say.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I had the pleasure of meeting with the, the youth advisory committee this last week, and one thing they talked about was having a place in Sterling Heights where they could all hang out. I think this is a wonderful addition. I joked around that when I was a kid, I went to the arcade, and they said, "Yeah, but the arcade has all these retro games," and I felt at that moment very, very old, and this is crazy to me, so I'm glad they're going to have a wonderful new facility. Thank you so much, Christian Financial.
Well, I have, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, yeah, I want to thank you too as well. For people that are maybe watching at home wondering what is an esports arena, I encourage you to come check it out when it's finished, because it's, there's really, there's not a lot of them out there. We're, we're sort of on the cutting edge of this, and I'm proud that the city of Sterling Heights is taking a lead in this regard. It is something that's really becoming huge. Esports is, is something that is becoming a multi-billion dollar industry out there, and for the city to be getting involved in it, and for Christian Financial Credit Union to be supporting it, I think is going to pay dividends for you, and it's, I know it's going to be great for our community. We are already having the gaming nights on Mondays, and my, Mayor Protem Sarowski talked about her sons. My daughter is 11 years old, and she loves it. I mean, she's obsessed with, like, whereas I used to worship Michael Jordan and basketball players, she loves YouTubers that play video games. It's incredible. It's just a totally different world that, that we're really jumping into, and I appreciate it, and it's another, it's another example of our Parks and Recreation Department setting themselves apart and, and really leading the way. So, thank you, Christian Financial Credit Union. Thank you, Kyle Langloy. Great job, everyone. So, no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Give it up for Christian Financial. (applause) Our next, our next item tonight is another great presentation. This is to acknowledge and accept a donation by Edward Pyatt of $5,000 to the Sterling Heights Public Library to enhance the Anne-Marie Given International Language Collection. We have a presentation from our library director, Tammy Turgen. Ms. Turgen.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council, Mr. Bohorski, and residents. As the library director, I'm thrilled tonight to speak with you about a donation that's been made to the Sterling Heights Public Library. One of our great residents and retired library staff members of nine years, I just found out, Mr. Ed Pyatt would like to enhance the library's Anne-Marie Given International Language Collection with a donation of $5,000 to purchase books in multiple languages, including Albanian, Chinese, Gujarati, Hindi, Japanese, Polish, Spanish, Urdu, and Vietnamese. These books provide increased access to various language materials that will be available for all of our residents to access. The collection, established in 2002, is named after Ed's late wife and includes more than 3,600 books, DVDs, and magazines, the largest international language collection in the county. Over the years, Ed has donated over $40,000 to the collection and the fireside reading area on the second floor of the library. He has gone above and beyond in his support of the library and is committed to providing our residents with materials of great quality. I am truly grateful. We have such great residents that support the library in so many ways. The Friends of the Library continue to support the library by funding our collections and programming. The library's memorial and honor book program provides residents with the opportunity to purchase materials for the library's collection with a book plate placed inside the book that honors an individual or is in memory of a loved one that has passed. These monetary donations provide for additions to our collections that can be shared with all of the city's residents. It's a great way to support the library and share your love of reading and education. The Sterling Heights Public Library is an integral part of the community. Our mission is to serve as an information center, offering a wide variety of materials and services for education, entertainment, and enrichment in a welcoming and helpful environment. As an institution of learning and discovery, Mr. Pyatt's generosity will assist the library in meeting the needs of our community. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and thank you, Ed. If you'd like to say a few words, come on. (laughter) Ed brought members of his family here as well. You know, this has been, it's a great part of the library. It's well-used and well-taken care of, and I said to Ed earlier today, he was the first person to bring the library staff treats when we opened. He's a great cook. (laughter) Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. (applause) If you don't want to say anything, we understand. That's fine. Do you mind if we come and take a picture with you down like we did just before? All right, let's go, council.
(laughter) 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 (laughter)
All right, council, once again, we do have a suggested action here. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Ziarco.
Okay, a resolve to acknowledge and accept the donation of Ed Pyatt of $5,000 to the Sterling Heights Public Library to acquire materials for the Anne-Marie Given International Language Collection. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Ziarco.
I just want to thank Ed for his continued support of the library, and the fact, I just asked him, he said he worked there for 35 years, and I'm thinking $40,000 is a lot of money to give back to the community, so I truly appreciate it, and I know that the partner, the people that come to the library as well appreciate this particular collection. So, thank you very much.
Counsel, anyone else? Well, just on behalf of everyone in Sterling Heights, I can say that the public library is perhaps one of the, the most popular places in the entire city, and with a diverse city like we have, this collection really fits in well here, and we are proud to have you as a resident, proud to have you as a former employee, and we thank you for your generosity, and I want to thank all of your family too for being here as well to commemorate this, and we look forward to your continued support of our public library, Mr. Pyatt, and thank you so much for everything you did. One more big round of applause.[1575.33][1575.33](applause) Counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by Philip Ruggieri for a residential plan unit development on approximately 7.85 acres of land situated on the west side of Shaner Road, south of Hall Road, PPUD 21-0001. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I'm Mr. Bohorski. Before you tonight is requested public hearing for planned unit development, known as Sterling Center. The actual planned unit development would allow for a four-story, multiple-family apartment building of, for a total of 126 total units, which are comprised of 92, or 91 two-bedroom units and 35 one-bedroom units. PUD is being utilized here to develop this within our C2 planned comparison district, which is mainly a commercial district, obviously. Location is 44-501 and 44-677 Shaner Road. Again, that's the C2 district itself. The building is proposed to be okay within the existing parking lot of the shopping center for the Sterling Center Shopping Center. The shopping center itself is approximately 38,000 square feet. The APK, again, is looking to construct those 126 units. 35 units would be one-bedroom. 32 of those units would be slightly below what our ordinance requires typically for a multiple-family one-bedroom unit at 575 square feet. Three of them would be slightly over 700 square feet. The two-bedroom units, which would total 91, the majority of those units would be about 825 square feet apiece. Three of them would be quite a bit larger, just over 1,000 square feet. Proposed rents or the expected rent for these, obviously this is going to be dictated ultimately by market, would be anticipated about $1,250 to $1,600. The site is obviously a little bit unique from the standpoint that most of you realize that this area is predominantly a commercial area, and that the building itself would be essentially situated within the parking lot amongst the number of retail uses in the place of worship further to the west. The site does have site amenities, including two small green areas for gazebos and outdoor spaces along the front of the building. We'll see those in just one second. The APK does plan to split this ultimately into three parcels, one being the apartment building itself, one being the retail center, then obviously the place of worship towards the backside of the property. Here's a zoning map, again, kind of depicting that entire area, saying it's all C2 on that particular area, and then the master land use plan follows right along with that in terms of retail being the ultimate plan of development for the majority of the city. With that being said, the master plan also talks about the fact that our commercial centers, a number of our commercial centers could benefit from potentially a mixture of uses. Introduction or reviving of them through a multitude of non-traditional commercial uses, and it calls for actual mixed-use development. This is not specifically one of those areas, but the overall intent of the master plan does suggest that a number of our areas within the city could benefit from an infusion of, of different types of uses. Taking a look at the overall aerial photo here, this general white dotted line shows, generally speaking, where the impacted area would be for this potential development. Shopping Center to the south or the bottom side of the screen, the Heritage Church over to the west or to the left-hand side of the screen, and then obviously, again, the dotted line would be the impacted area for the retail development. Just some different perspective shots, how it would sit, situated versus Lakeside in the top right corner. Again, then Heritage Church down to the bottom left-hand corner. Just kind of the reverse shot, looking from basically a top Lakeside, kind of looking into the southwesterly direction. Side of the existing shopping center that would face the apartment building itself.
Excuse me, Mayor Taylor. Could we get someone to shut the door?
Officer in the back, if you could shut the door. Thank you.
Have him speak up a little bit.
Speak into the mic.
Yeah, can you tilt it up a little bit? Thank you.
I'll try to lean down a little bit. So this shows, you're starting to see the context of the building, but also the potential for the walkway linkages, which the master plan ultimately calls for, through the ITC corridor that goes just to the south of the shopping center. So this residential building could ultimately link not only along the Shana Road frontage, but also could benefit from a future planned link through the ITC and utility corridor that's just to the south of this. This starts to show the revised landscape plans. Coming out of the Planning Commission public hearing, the Planning Commission indicated that they would like to see additional green space provided for this particular site. So it doesn't show up overly well on this drawing, but in your packets you can see it. But basically, the U-shape created by the building, this is one half of the building. This is the east end of the building. The entire frontage is basically of the building itself is a green space, formalized green space for this particular development. And then again, this is the west side of the building, the mirrored half of the building that also shows that additional green space there, where there's proposed improvements, sculpture, as well as gazebos and extensive landscaping for that particular area. This starts to show the elevations of the building, again, a four-story building, showing a burnished block that simulates somewhat of a limestone appearance. The brown areas is a simulated wood grain texture of hardy board type product. And then the dark gray or almost black areas is a metal-seamed product which would highlight those projections coming off of the building. And just some aerial or just some perspective drawings of how this would situate. This would basically be coming in the driveway, so to speak. Shopping Center would be just to the left of this, and then the building that's sitting in within the existing parking lot today over to the right-hand side. Kind of a zoomed-in version of that enhanced landscape space there, showing the gazebos, the sculpture there, and the reddish-orange colored kind of in the background there. But again, showing the area where would be the community green space for this particular development. This kind of shows the overall floor plans, basically, again, showing the mixture of one- and two-bedroom units. So the PUD modifications, the applicant is requesting modifications in terms of overall density from what it would normally be anticipated within the RM2 district. The minimum square footage of units for the one-bedroom units, again, they're slightly under what the ordinance would normally allow. Setbacks, slight setback from what would be the intended south property line to the shopping center. Not a significant setback, because again, it's all sitting within, again, the existing parking lot. It's not necessarily against an additional residential unit or something. The open space and recreation area, the applicant did increase the amount of open space to about 22,000 square feet. That is still short of what the ordinance would require. It is far more than what was presented at the commission meeting. The bulk requirements, basically the height of the building, again, it's a four-story building. The predominance of that building is about 44 and a half feet tall. The tallest portion of that building is about 47 feet, but that's just the entrance details itself. The predominance of that building is about 44 and a half. Building length, typical building length is 180 feet. This building is right about three times that length in terms of the maximum allowable length. And then the parking spaces for storage units or for storage of RVs and things. Our ordinance technically requires this. They're asking for a modification not to allow it. We're obviously in favor of that. Signage, they're requesting a second sign to be placed on the site in addition to the shopping center. So there'd be shopping center and then a freestanding sign for this particular development, which would also house a sign as shown on the drawings for Heritage Church. And then they're requesting the wall signage on the building itself. So those are the modifications. Taking a look at the PUD analysis, this is a multiple-family building amongst a number of other retail buildings in the place of worship. The mixed use is desired within the city and is promoted as a tool to revitalize shopping centers. Again, not while, well, not specifically outlined in this particular area of the master plan, but the master plan's general intent is to promote that. Lakeside to the east, obviously most of you are aware, this is a concept we're looking at very heavily for Lakeside redevelopment. This would just be a miniature-type version of that, if you want to take a look at it that way. Building height and size relative to surrounding buildings, this is all surrounding commercial buildings, all large buildings. So building height and size in this particular area isn't such a significant factor, particularly, again, looking at what we're looking at potentially doing at Lakeside. Potential first step for a long-term integration of mixed use into the Shana and Hall Road area. Again, if you look at the short term, this particular building sitting within that context, some may wonder, is this the right fit? But again, if you look at the holistic picture, and that this potentially being the first step of revitalizing that entire section, it looks like a little bit more in terms of a land use pattern that the city would ultimately be promoting. And then obviously, it provides a housing product that's needed within the city. Right now, we see a high demand for one- and two-bedroom apartment or condo style living. This would obviously fulfill that need. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Mr. Rogeri, would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody. For the record, Phil Rogeri on behalf of the petitioner, which is Anthony, Tony Gallo. He's the petitioner in this matter, and we also have architect Mark Chover, and we have Andy Wakefield, our engineer. As Chris had outlined, this is a unique concept that Tony has put together, and for the first time, he brought into our community here in Sterling Heights. As you all know, Tony's not a stranger in our community. He's well-invested as an entrepreneur. He owns the shopping center at 14 and Van Dyke, Walmart is located at 16 and a half in Van Dyke. He has that center. And recently, he had developed the Sterling Landing, which is at 15 and Van Dyke, which consists of 200 apartment units. And the involvement's very successful, thanks to Tony. He's articulate and very detailed on maintaining his properties. Sterling Landing has been a huge success for him. It's 100% occupied, and it has provided him a stimulus to increase the holdings of apartments here in Sterling Heights. As you can see by the design, this is more of a trendy upscale-type product, not seen here in Macomb County anywhere. It'll be the first of its nature. And what he's trying to accomplish is salvage his existing commercial centers. This site has a tremendous amount of open parking. It's underutilized. It's just a sea of parking with commercial properties that are way in the back of the site. Very typical over the past 50 years as to how we build commercial. Today, we need to be closer to the road, catch the eye of the individuals. I have the pleasure of driving every day down Shana, because my office is about half a mile south of this site. And I've always scratched my head looking at this center, saying, you know, there's just too much parking here. What can you do with it? Well, Tony's a step ahead of me. He called me into his office and says, I've got an idea. What do you think of this? I was floored. I thought that was one of the nicest designs of apartments that I've seen in quite some time. It's not the standard look. It's something that'll have tremendous curb appeal. But the beauty of this is that it'll attract people to come to the center, and in the interim, they'll see the commercial that's already there, help create that synergism that's there, as well as going into the apartments. It also ties in with all the ingress and egress and easements. It ties into everything, all the way to the DSW floor, to genuine cigars, and the Hobby-Lobby Store, et cetera. It'll help create activity through the existing commercial center, as well as his center, which would be directly to the south and remain intact. So it was really carefully thought out. I gotta say, our team with Andy and Mark, they did a tremendous job putting it together with Tony's guidance. And the nice thing about it, it captures and provides an integration of ideas and ingenuity at a time when our commercial is over in overabundance. We have a lot of vacancies throughout the city and throughout the entire tri-county area. We're now able to infuse something new and invigorating and to help stimulate that. And this idea of 126 units, four-story, I think is a tremendous asset for our community. I think this is going to trigger some thoughts on how to redevelop Lakeside Mall, which is directly across the street. There's a lot of outlots that still remain vacant. There are ideas that are surfacing now. I just saw today how the old toy store, Toys R Us, is being renovated. You see Portillo's over there coming around. They leveled out the old Andiamo's, VJs, very successful. That's the kind of stuff we need to have in Sterling Heights to make our centers strong. And I think the mixed use that they'll probably generate in Lakeside will have a lot of this appeal to it as far as any housing that goes in there, office structure, et cetera. So Tony, as Chris indicated, this is probably a little bit of a mini Lakeside Mall situation. But that's something I think they should look at carefully, as well as, you know, the city council and planning, to have this type of a standard as to what you put in there for housing units, to mix in with your office and retail and other products that will be presented. This is a good start. Tony has taken great pains in meeting any of the criteria and shortcomings of this development. At planning, everybody was in favor. We had a 6-2 vote, but the two dissenters were just unsure about getting all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. And we assured them that we're going to have a full-fledged PUD agreement, which imposes all the conditions that Mr. Gallo, or Tony, if you will, will be obligated to meet. And at the Planning Commission, we had about 5,000 square feet of open space, which seemed way too little, and they expressed they'd like to have it up to 15,000 square feet. Well, Tony and his team got together, and they actually increased it to 22,000 square feet, which is another 7,000, above and beyond what their plateau was that they'd be happy with. So I think he's made every effort to achieve and make this a successful project. He's created some amenities on the outside area. There's a grilling area, a fire pit, sitting area, et cetera. And he's put an extensive amount of landscaping, which I know the city is always geared up to have. In fact, Tony is a landscaping crazy man. He put more than the landscaping required at Sterling Landing. I would say probably 10 to 15% more than was required. And likewise in here, if there's something that doesn't quite seem to be right, he'll add. That's the kind of person he is. He's wide open in that regard. He spares no expense in making his products excellent. And I've known Tony a number of years and his father, and he does everything right. He's well-trained. He sat on the Warren City Planning Commission himself. He's really very knowledgeable about ordinance requirements and detail, and he's to a point, he's a fanatic about detail. And you can see in his product, the design is second to none. Very excited about the type of material and construction design that's in there. It's all first-class. I think Chris covered a lot of the salient points, but I just want you to realize that this integration of a design of this nature really pulls it all together for that center. That whole center behind Hobby-Lobby and everything else is, it's been struggling for a lot of years. It's had a very slow comeback. I think something like this will certainly give it synergism that we need. We have went to great lengths to have the planned unit development in detail created through Clark Andrews and the office therein. And we presented that before the city council, and he has exercised it and signed it, and he's prepared to have you take a look at it, if we're fortunate that you can go ahead and sign that. I think, as far as the interior of the building, I want to point out just a few items. Tony's designed a system that you don't have any outdoor trash dispensers. All the trash is contained within the buildings. There's a common corridor room that people walk to. They bring their trash, and it goes down a chute. It's intercepted at the base floor, and then weekly, the garbage is taken out of there, which keeps it clean. It keeps, residents don't have to deal with weather conditions and walking with bags and so on. It keeps the building itself clean. It keeps the surrounding clean, and it doesn't cause any debris of any kind typically you have when you have an outdoor trash dispenser. It's a very safe community. You have to use a key system to get in, or I'm sorry, card system. It's a card system that you have to get in. He's got a designated area for like an Amazon delivery, a FedEx, where they can drop the boxes off, is a drop-off box room. It's all contained, but then to get in, you have to know the code and have the key to get into the interior. So you provide a lot of safety for the residents. And this complex is geared up, because it is high-level, upscale, it's geared up for young professionals. You can see predominantly that mix that goes in there. This is the type of stuff that a lot of our young executives love living in. And with Lakeside coming around the corner for its renovation, this is going to be a really hot area. And I'm glad that my office is right down the street, because maybe the value goes up a little bit more. But other than that, I think we've covered quite a bit. If you have any particular questions on any of the details, our team is here to answer them, as well as Tony and myself. And I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogeri. Thank you, Mr. Gallo, for being here. I'm sure there will be a number of questions. But at this time, what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing, and we'll let the public ask questions and make comments. And then if we, once we're deliberating, we can call you back up. So I will officially open the public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. I have a couple of questions, maybe to Mr. Gallo or Mr. Rogeri. From the site plans, we don't see is the charging stations for the cars, and how do they anticipate putting those in, and how many? Because I got a feeling it has to be 193. There's no question about that. That's how many units it is. Should be one for every unit. And then number two, have anybody did a traffic study for that area adding an extra 193? Because as we all know, Hall Road, probably till just about this time or a little bit later, it's jammed pretty tight. Going south on Shana, it goes from three lanes down to two lanes. And then, we already know Canal is only two lanes. Going north on Shana, until just about a little bit after this time, it's pretty jammed over that way. So has the traffic study been done to see out what we can do for that area to relieve some of the pressure of people? It's just because I know on Hayes over there, at certain times of the day, you can go towards Lakeside Village. You can see where you're going, but it's gonna be a minute just from the traffic. Same, looks like it's gonna be over here in this area. Also, is Mr. Gallo willing to put a sidewalk on that side of Shana? Right now, there's no sidewalk on that side of Shana Road. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else under the public hearing? Not, close that portion. And counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to approve the application by Philip Rogeri for a residential planned unit development on approximately 7.85 acres of land situated on the west side of Shana Road, south of Hall Road, P-P-U-D 21-0001, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval on behalf of the city.
Support.
We moved and supported. Any discussion? Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. Rogeri, Mr. Gallo, whoever would like to answer a couple of questions that I have. So you're going to have 35 one-bedrooms and 91 two-bedroom apartments. Are any of the apartments going to be lofts? I mean, that seems to be a trending design for apartments. So I was just wondering, are any lofts?
I don't believe any lofts, no.
No? Okay. I appreciate the increase in the green space and the internal entrance to all the apartments. You actually answered my question. I was wondering if there was going to be a concierge or something, but it's strictly a card. And then will you have common space inside for residents? Are you going to have a pool? Are you going to have a workout room? Are you going to have, what kind of amenities will you have?
We do have a common lounge area for them to congregate. We ruled out a workout room only because of the issues that We ruled out the workout room only because of the issues that have arisen, because of COVID and so on, the liability issues and the problems that people have encountered and the resistance to have that common shared-type equipment. And we have LA Fitness down the road, and Lifetime Fitness not very far from here. So if people really want to truly work out on a regular basis, they have access to that. And I think that's a lot better for them.
Okay. And if you could answer Mr. Jefferson's question about the e-charging stations, is there a plan to have any of those on-site?
Go ahead, Anthony, you'll answer that one.
So good evening, council and members of the community. At this time, we don't have any charging stations planned, but we have been approached by Consumers Energy on a program that they're offering that we're very interested in, not only for this site, but some of our other sites. As we evolve to more electric vehicles, we do think there will be a need for that. So that is something that we certainly are going to prep, and hopefully by then, we would have some kind of arrangement with them worked out where we'll have a couple charging stations.
Okay. And also, can you tell me what your build timeframe is? When are you planning on starting construction?
Well, it's our goal to, hopefully, if we're blessed this evening with your support and approval, we would then seek engineering approval. Our engineer is here this evening, our architect team is here, and we would immediately just proceed through the ordinary course of business of receiving permits and full engineering. And we believe that it would be a start in 2022. Hopefully, the first quarter, depending on how nice the folks in engineering are to us.
Okay. I hear they're pretty nice.
They are nice.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have for you. Mr. McLeod, however, could you go over the timeline required by the PUD ordinance?
Excuse me, I'd be glad to. So site plan approval has to be achieved within 12 months, and then over the course of building permit, 18, and construction within three years, basically. So the timeframe that Mr. Gallo indicated would be more than met by what the PUD ordinance allows for. If there was some sort of hiccup in the road, so to speak, the ordinance does allow for him to petition for extensions. So then those have been granted in certain situations in the past. So that would be an available option as well.
Okay, thank you. Just one last comment is, in looking at the layout, I have to say that I appreciate that the layout is the way it is instead of blocking businesses within your shopping center. Because all too often, we've seen where those outpads are built, and every business behind the outpad in those shopping centers are basically forgotten about because they're blocked. So I appreciate the position of the building, and I wish you well. I'm excited about something new, a new concept in the city, and I wish you much success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just a couple, well, first of all, a comment. Well, as long as Mr. McLeod's there, through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Have you heard of any opposition to this project, whether it be from the businesses, the church, or the residents in the area?
I have not heard from any direct opposition, no. I think there's been some points raised by some of the neighboring properties, but I think in terms of direct commentary and opposition of it, I would have to say no.
Okay. That's my only question for you. The other comment that I have, and Mrs. Schmidt also addressed that, was the common entrance, which I think is a great idea for these apartments. And then through the chair to either Mr. Rogeri or Mr. Gallo. Yes, I can't see on that side of the room, so if you're still here, you know. I have to say, Mr. Rogeri, usually when you come before us, it's one of those projects where, oh my gosh, here's a tough one, and Phil's here. But I have to say, this is an easy one tonight. I guess my question would be, is there additional parking spaces for the shopping center that's there? I mean, is there enough for their clients, patrons, so we're good there? And then how many vacancies are in that strip right now?
The primary tenant, anchor tenant, is Pier One. They closed roughly two years ago, and Tony hasn't even had a phone call on that unit. It's been a very difficult situation, and that is the largest tenant. He struggles with the site, but he is a good promoter, and the tenants are pretty solid people, and things have been working out. But it's a struggle. This, I think, will make a big difference.
And knowing how you talk to neighbors, like in the neighborhood of whatever project you're doing, have you had discussions with the Heritage Church about this project?
Sure we have, yes.
Okay. And I think it's a good idea. I think I like the concept. I really think it's giving us a preview of what could happen at Lakeside. I think it's wise to actually do this now before the development at Lakeside. So I think there's a lot of things that are in our favor here. So I'm looking forward to the beginning and having it come to fruition. I know that maybe you can, because this is your business, why is the trend moving toward apartments rather than condos as far as development?
Well, I can probably answer it. I develop and build a lot of apartments as well. The trend is the younger generation doesn't want to hold on to real estate like our generations have. And they're more mobile, they're transferring their jobs quite readily, they can go from state to state, city to city. So they don't want to be tied down with a piece of real estate because of that. So they do rent, and they want to give themselves choices. They don't stay in one place for a long period of time. The turnover is pretty considerable. Plus, and you've got the other sector, the older generations, they like to downsize their home, and they like to rent as opposed to having the maintenance issues with owning a home, paying taxes, insurance, snow plowing, maintenance of the lawn, et cetera. It's all maintenance-free in an apartment complex. Plus, some people like to travel, you know, and they don't have to worry about their home. In an apartment complex, it's very safe, it's all confined and under security. So they feel comfortable leaving and going elsewhere to either vacation or what have you. So these are the trends, and apartments, the forecast that I've come across, you're looking at 30 to 40 more years of a lot more apartments coming down the road, because it seems to be the trend in the way of living today to a great extent. The days of the homeownership is dwindling greatly.
Like I said, I can't, I don't see any downside to this. I really think that it's a good project. So my other question, Mr. Gallo, do you own any other property near there, like adjacent to this, where if you needed an expansion, you could do that?
Well, we own the shopping center to the south, of course. Right now, we're in current leases with tenants, and we're serving that clientele. It's hard to say that, you know, down the road, maybe 10 years, 15 years, who knows? Some timeframe, if that use changes, maybe there'd be an opportunity for that to apartments. But at the moment, we're happy serving our tenants that are there. We support them, we want to see them flourish. But we are in a changing retail environment, as we all know. Retailers today need less and less of the mortar because of our shopping habits have changed. Most of us order online, and as a result, it's been impactful to local retailers. But at the moment, we plan to redevelop that.
Okay. No further questions, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Either Mr. Gallo or Mr. Rogeri, a couple of questions. Will there be any type of assigned parking for the residents there? Or is that just whatever's available in the parking area?
Well, what we'll do is it'll be first-come, first-served parking for the tenants that are within the development. We do have a common parking agreement with all three tenants there, all three co-owners. And so there's cross-access and cross-parking. Parking, you know, is abundant there.
Okay. Looking at the drawings, talk to me about the interior layout of the units. Most of your units are going to be the single 575 square feet, correct?
No, ma'am. The majority are two-bedroom units.
The majority are two-bedroom.
Ninety-one of those are two-bedroom units, and 35 are one-bedroom.
Okay. Well...
And number 35, 32 are 575, and three are 716 square feet.
Okay, the 716. They'll consist of, of course, your bathroom, your bedroom, or two bedrooms, rather.
One-bedroom. Are you talking about the one-bedroom units or the...
Either or. My question is, what exactly will the units consist of? Will there be laundry facilities there in each unit, or will there be a common laundry?
Great question. So the interior amenities, we will have a separate washer and dryer in each of the units. So every unit will be independent. They will have their own washing facilities, and there'll be high-end finishes inside the units as well. There'll be quartz countertops, quartz or granite. There'll be high-end appliances, stainless steel, that's standard in all of our units. So it will be a current look inside and a higher-end product. All the floor will be LVP with carpet in the bedrooms, upgraded hardware, upgraded cabinets with soft-close hinges. So our customers will certainly appreciate that.
So all they have to bring is their bedroom furniture and their living room furniture and their table?
Yes, ma'am.
We can lease that to them.
No doubt.
Will there be an apartment manager located there on-site?
Yes, the hours will be, we won't have someone living there full-time. I mean, if they choose to rent a unit, they probably could, but we have standard office hours Monday through Friday. Our leasing office is tended and it's open. There will generally be three full-time employees there. We'll have a manager, we'll have a maintenance person, and a leasing agent. That's generally what we have with 100 units at each of our sites. They're fully maintained throughout the week.
And he does have 24-hour availability for any...
Yeah, they're on-call.
Okay. Once again, the security, am I correct in saying that to get in, it's by pass key of some kind, and mail delivery is through a secured location?
Yes, correct. We'll be implementing a key fob system to enter the common areas. Of course, the tenants can access their unit at any time, but any visitors would either have to have the tenant living there let them in, or they'd have to have their own key fob. Security is very important to us. It's very important we maintain a safe environment for our customers. And as far as FedEx and US Postal Service, they would have their own designated codes to enter a building for deliveries.
Okay, so everybody would have their own mailbox, per se?
For sure, yes. And these would be separately managed as well. They'll all have their own separate utilities. So if you're living there, it's no different than living in a condominium setting, where you pay for whatever water you use, you pay for whatever electric you use, it's individually billed, which is a very nice feature for the tenants.
Okay, so all utilities are separate from the monthly rent? And then that was my next question. Your monthly rent is?
Well, it's not been established fully yet, but due to our market studies, we think that we're going to be between $1,250 to $1,600 a month for our rent.
And the future plans are to create a path to lead to the corridor there for a continued walking path?
Well, it is part of the planning process. When and if that is implemented, certainly we'll have the ability to implement that to the extent that is a requirement. We would have no intention to doing that. But yes, the internal parking lots that are there, the way we're going to be striping it and laying out the parking lot, would accommodate folks that want to walk to that facility.
The main thing is, since there isn't going to be that much green space, there would be the ability to walk, because you're dealing with the parking lot here. So they would have the ability for walking down the path, circling around, and getting in their exercise, if that's what they chose to do. Now, this is going to be built in a parking lot. Are you going to excavate for a basement, or is this going to go on a slab?
Slab upgrade and just a slab construction, nobody's doing. We generally fence off our sites during construction. We're very interested in that, even from a security and theft standpoint. Right now, we have 245 apartments under construction at the moment. Both sites are fully secured, they're fenced all the way around with temporary fencing. We would intend to do that here.
As Mr. Rogeri said, this is a very unique style. What is going to be the maintenance of the wood cost?
It's a very good question. The, it's not a wood product, it's a composite. I have a very talented architect and engineer that worked with us, and, you know, younger gentleman, as you can see. And this building was designed, for lack of a better term, is something you would see in an urban setting, something you would see in a higher-end community, and the features of the exterior are fully maintenance-free. We don't want to go back and paint. It's a burnished material, it's a burnished stone on the first, you know, first parts of the building. All the other areas are composite material that look like a wood veneer. But from a maintenance perspective, there is no paint and painting or maintenance required.
That is absolutely fantastic. I think I could use some of that. Sounds like a very successful, to-be-successful project, and I wish you all the best.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Mrs. Sarowski.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I have a couple of questions. And first, I would actually like to acknowledge and congratulate you, the architects and engineer first, that this is a beautiful building. It looks like something I do a lot of driving around the community, and it looks like something in Birmingham, something new, something innovative. And I think that that, you know, as a mother of your generation, I would, my children are your age, I would expect generally, and this would be something they would love to live in. This would be something that they would be looking for. And that's what we really want, to make sure that we are keeping the community vibrant, safe, some of our key buzzwords that we use in our community, because we want that to... revitalization is extremely important. We cannot continue to just go down a single path. And so, Mr. Gallo, thank you, because I know this area has been your property for a very long time. Just as an aside, he just had, I'm aware of a fundraiser for one of the local Lions Clubs, he had a carnival there. And so this is going to be, I appreciate that, and I thank you for that fundraiser. It's going to be a different opportunity for this property now going forward. So I do have a couple of questions, and I do want to also acknowledge Mr. Jefferson. He did mention a traffic study, and when we're talking about bringing in residents to this very, very busy area, I'm hoping that eventually, if there hasn't been a traffic study, that we could probably get something going. I'd love to see the speed lowered in that area anyway, because it is pretty quick and very dangerous for pedestrians. But has there been a traffic study?
There has not been a traffic study done. The impact of this is much less than what it originally was. This was originally an AMC movie theater. It was developed as that way, and there's much less pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic for our use than a very large auditorium. So parking and traffic have not been an issue. We have not had a traffic study. We're not intending to do one unless you require one, you know, so...
Right. Okay, it does, and I really appreciate that, yes. So what is, and I like this, because I would, in my vision of how we hopefully develop Lakeside across the street, I want to see residential, multi-use, mixed-use into that area. I want to see that. And I know that there have been different opportunities, or different opinions, or different drawings and mockups of how that can be, but I think that this is the best way to bring in that vibe, bringing in the multi-use and mixed abilities for people to really stay in place, recreate, live, get out and go to their doctor's office, get some food, go out and have some entertainment within a local area where they can walk. Walkability is extremely important in any urban setting. We have to be able to get where we need to go without having to drive everywhere. Not necessarily a Michigan concept, but we're working on it. And so I do, I think that this is a great, great start, springboard, for the other developers to see that this is what we can do, and this is how we can do it right. So I thank you for that. Next question, I do, and I'm always concerned about parking lots and the water runoff, and now this is going to eliminate some water runoff, but are you using any innovative materials in your parking lot or in your structure that's more green, that's going to... that's more green, that's going to help us not only reclaim the water, but prevent any contamination from that water just in general? Is that, and probably a engineer or architect for that?
Andy Wakeland with Giffords Webster, this is a civil engineer.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, good.
We're not, per se, using like a pervious pavement, but we are increasing the impervious area by adding that over twenty-two thousand square-foot open space in addition to the additional landscaping. So, it will improve the runoff.
Okay, I do appreciate that. And my brother's a civil engineer, so I have to ask these kind of questions. They stick in my brain. Okay, very good. So, thank you. And then, so that really was my biggest concern. I just wanted to say again, thank you. I love that that's twenty-two thousand square feet of green space. And I look forward to seeing how it goes. Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have from here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is so fascinating to me. I really do agree with my colleagues that it could be a catalyst in this area. I do have some questions about it, though. It's so hard, because I almost feel like it should be twinned. We have a shopping center on the south side. I feel like you could twin it and then put a little bit more green space in between. That would really improve the area. Because that's what my concerns are really about, not just the green space. Because everyone has to start somewhere. So, you're converting basically a beaten-down parking lot into a livable community. And I respect that. And I think it's really would set up the area for more of, this really isn't mixed-use, but it's somewhat higher density that would go along really well with mixed-use. But, you know, I have some concerns because, you know, a lot of our condos or apartment buildings in cities, they have families in them. I know this probably is not designed for families, per se. But where are the kids going to play? Is this twenty-two thousand square feet enough area for them to really get out there and move around? I guess through the chair to Mr. Rogeri or Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. So, you're correct in saying that the product is geared towards young professionals. Certainly, we would lease anybody that comes through the door that's qualified. The area in front that we have designated as the open space area certainly will be a place where folks can stretch out, they can work outside, hang out outside, and certainly exercise if they like. And that area will be designated for that. In addition, for folks wishing to walk, as you mentioned a moment ago, there is an existing sidewalk. The gentleman earlier in the audience had asked if we'd be willing to provide a sidewalk along Shaner. And I just want everyone to know, including the gentleman, that there is a sidewalk that exists there. To Phil's point, you know, we've, we have LA Fitness in the area. And we also have the place on Lakeside Boulevard, Lifetime Fitness.
Again, I see it, and hopefully, and I'm looking at the renderings and they're a little bit rough yet. They're going to still get ironed out a little bit. But there will be sidewalk from the Shaner sidewalk into your site. It's not just going to have to be walking through a parking lot, I hope, correct? Because that's my biggest fear, you know, with kids. I was a kid, I grew up in Detroit. We played in the street. I mean, that's how it kind of was going. But we are a little bit of slower streets. You know, this could end up being a little bit of a speedy parking lot. So, I'm hoping that you're going to do everything in your power to kind of limit how fast people can run through this parking lot. Maybe put some angles up or whatever, just to make sure that no, I would hate to see a pedestrian get struck. I don't know if that's your intention either, obviously. You know? And then, I'm also curious, if there are families, where would the school bus pick the kids up? Would they be picked up on Shaner? Would the school bus come in? I'm just wanting to make sure they're safe.
That would depend on the school's bus route.
Right.
I can't speak to the school's bus route.
Obviously, yeah.
I can't imagine a school bus stopping in the middle of Shaner Road.
Right.
So, I'm sure there'd be a designated area for the folks that do attend Utica School District. They would get with the local school to find.
And you're going to strip up the parking lot and put a barrier up? Just make sure that the, whatever families are there?
Yes, sir.
Be protected, yeah. So, I really like the design. It's something that you would see in like a DC or New York City, something kind of fascinating. I was curious why there wasn't maybe a deck on top of the building or a pool on top of the building? I think it really could go a long way with the features. I mean, you're really going for a higher-end clientele. And I think a lot of those buildings have amenities like that. Now, I know LA Fitness has a pool, but maybe something to think about on top of the building that could really be a salient point. Because I think this is going to, the standard for all the other construction is going to fill in around it. I see this as being the beginning, not the end of this, this area, I would hope. And then... Oh, I just wanted to make sure, too. There's two parcels here that you're going to, if you're going to, one parcel you're going to split into two parcels, I believe? And are you going to make sure that both parcels are brought up to the current code and standard? You said that you're going to do some facial improvements to the shopping center, I believe, I read in the packet?
That's correct.
So, it'll be, everything will be brought up to the new standard?
At the existing shopping center, we intend to paint it as part of the developmental process. We do intend to make enhancements to the parking lot and maneuvering areas throughout both facilities. And would be first-class development, that I can assure you.
Right. I agree with my colleague, Mrs. Koski. I think maybe a designated parking area or even one designated parking spot per unit, just so people have a place where they can park would be beneficial. But I have no problem with the shared parking. Again, I, hopefully, in the future, maybe that commercial center would go away and you'd twin the building and put in some green space between them. And I think it really would have the top amenity in the whole state, I want to say. I think it'd be wonderful. So, we, sorry?
Good idea.
Yeah. And then, I guess my final concern would be, I'm going to take this on faith. You know, I, we had disagreement about your last property, Sterling Landings. It's really turned into a first-class development. You obviously invest a lot of time and work into maintaining the standard. So, I'm going to take you on your word in this. Make sure this is going to be a maintained standard. And we're going to keep people safe. It's going to be a top-flight development. I'm going to vote yes on this. I came in kind of curious, but you've really assaged me here on my concerns. So, I wish you luck and I hope you really do maintain the standard and really set the standard for all of the new development over there.
Councilman, I want to address that comment that you made regarding our previous development. First, I want to say thank you for the confidence that this entire board, not only you guys, but the administration, allowed us to come in with a very high-dense project at fifteen and Van Dyke. And I'm sincerely grateful for that. And I appreciate the opportunity that we had to prove ourselves. Since we opened that facility, as Phil said, and I'm not trying to toot our own horn, but I want you to know how we conduct our affairs and our business. My standard in many instances is very, is much higher than a city ordinance. When we renovated that development there, Phil's exactly right, we put a lot more landscaping in. When it came to modifying the drain, that project was photographed from the county Drain Commission Office as a featured project of, you know, how to do a drain improvement. We put nice cobblestone in that riverway and all sod. So, I just want you to know that I'm very appreciative of the opportunity. I'm committed to the city here. I grew up here, I'm bred in this area. And I want you to know that I'm always going to do the right thing, not only for you guys, but the residents here.
I appreciate that. And again, you've impressed me with the first project. I'm going to hold you to it. And I think you're going to keep a very high standard here, go above and beyond. And I'll be honest, this will set the standard for all the new construction around you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mr. Yanez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I have Mr. Gallo up at the podium, I'll ask my first question to him. First of all, thank you for your investment in Sterling Heights. I greatly appreciate it. Your, the Sterling Landing project, what are the size of your one-bedroom apartments?
I-75.
And you have a hundred, and you have a hundred percent occupancy there?
You've been blessed with a hundred percent occupancy since we opened.
Okay, very good.
When they're vacant, they, you know, we have someone waiting, a waiting list.
Very good. And through the chair to Mr. McLeod. So, I see here the overall site plan, a site of this density would be normally five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand square feet. This is three-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand. So, about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet less. So, what are we not getting for two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet? What would a normal project look like that would be five-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand square feet? Bigger rooms or more amenities?
No, I mean, I think realistically, it'd be a function of, you might be getting some larger units, you'd be getting more green space, you know, potentially additional parking area. Everything would just be more spread out, so to speak. And traditional, I mean, if you look at any of our multiple-family developments around the city, our code has been relatively stable over the course of time. So, you'd be getting two-story dwelling units or two-story buildings that, again, are spread out, much less dense than this. But again, this is an urban form that the city now is saying, you know, from our master planning efforts all the way back from 2017 forward, is something that we're seeking. So, you know, that's why the PUD route was the one chosen to say it gave us the flexibility to maneuver from those environments. But again, the current multiple-family developments you see within the city that don't look like this, anything like this, is what the ordinance requires.
Thank you. And again, I apologize, Mr. Gallo and your team. You know, looking at the, some of the concepts for the Lakeside development, there were certainly buildings that were more than four stories. Had you considered going something higher?
No.
No, four stories? Is there, is there a specific reason why you didn't want to go more than four stories?
There are plenty of reasons for that. It's much more expensive with pure construction. When you're going up, generally above three stories, this is more for a four-story facility. We did have to add elevators to the building and other things. We did not explore doing a higher, a higher, high-rise building.
Okay, very good. And I noticed in the material here, it said that, and I don't know how old the material is, in the overview, it said that the applicant did not discuss the target market for this project. But you obviously had a target in mind, correct? When you were first putting this project together? Okay, I will admit that I just don't have the vision. You know, I guess I'm a little bit old-school. I grew up in a, in a time Mr. Rogeri talked about, you know, when space was king and so forth. You know, looking at the Lakeside development in total, when you're looking at that entire block of blacktop being populated by some sort of building, and then you look at this one where you have a strip mall and boom, this thing here and nothing else around it, it's sort of hard for me to conceive that. But I am going to put my trust in you. You've done a great job with your properties here. Your engineering team and your architect appear to be very professional. And so, I, I'm going to fully support this, this proposal. And one, and one other thing, through the chair to the city manager, you know, this is one of those things where you, you're just not aware of your surroundings because you're so familiar with them. Do we have a sidewalk gap south of this project between there and the condo complex? Do we know that? Or if we don't, can we find out?
We have a gap there.
We do have a gap.
There's a gap there.
That's what I thought.
I think, Mr. Yanez, I haven't, can't verify this, Chris, if you know, but I believe the ITC property to the south might be a gap area. And as you know, that larger parcel, which I think is currently zoned O-two, Chris, we generally don't require sidewalks until the site would be developed. Because obviously, it just gets torn up. So, that one, don't know the current status of any interest in that property. But I believe that's a fairly significant gap in the sidewalk on the, on the west side, Mr. Yanez.
And that goes back to what Councilman Radke was talking about. I can only imagine if this thing gets built and nothing gets developed on that property, people are going to want to walk to Kroger. They're going to want to walk down to that strip mall, you know, for whatever reason. And I think if we're going to put this project in, we really need to talk about closing that gap. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm on Google Maps right now. I can't find the gap.
Is it, do you?
Mr. Gallo, you said there's no gap there. I mean, are you, a sidewalk gap on the west side of Shaner? If I look at Google Maps, there is continuous sidewalk on the east and west side of Shaner from Hall Road all the way down to Almost Nineteen Mile Road. There's about a two-hundred-foot gap. And then, it's continuous sidewalk down to Clinton River. So, I don't know. It looks to me like there's sidewalk there. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the, what the concern is. But, look, I got to say, I think it's a really impressive plan. It's a, it's, you know, we're, I'm really excited about it. I'm excited to see this happening in the city of Sterling Heights. I think that we on the city council pride ourselves for being forward-thinking and trying to do new things. And this is a product that we've really been dying for. You know, we've been looking at targeting Lakeside Mall to develop those outlots, develop that parking lot. You know, as I'm on Google Maps, I mean, it's just a massive sea of parking there. And what a waste, what an incredible waste. I, I used to go to that movie theater. I'm sure, you know, all of us did. That was the movie theater you went to until they built Forum Thirty. And, you know, there's just way too much parking there. And I think this is a great way of, you know, filling that. I also remember when I was, you know, to my colleague, Henry Yanez, Mr. Yanez's point, I remember, right out of college or right out of law school, we got an apartment in Southfield. It was fourteen-hundred square feet. It was like two bedrooms. And it was eight-hundred dollars a month. And I mean, I would still live there right now if I could. It was incredible, you know? It was like no maintenance, fourteen-hundred square feet. My wife and I live in there. It was great. Now, my brother, he's just graduated from Michigan grad school. He's, he's got a girlfriend. They're looking at, you know, twenty-five-hundred dollars a month for something in Royal Oak or something in Birmingham or whatever. And it's like, well, you're not going to get a whole lot. So, there are a lot of people. And he's, you know, he's like me. He grew up in Macomb County. He's lived here his whole life. But they want to get out because there's nothing like this. Okay, so for us to be able to provide this, I think is really important. It's important because we've targeted, over the last four or five, six, seven years, we've targeted families particularly. You know, providing amenities like our splash pad, our parks and recreation, to bring in families. Now, I think we have an opportunity with the changing landscape in retail to use those spaces to target younger professionals. And, you know, we're already doing everything we can, like the Maple Lane development with the Moschieres for our senior, senior housing. We're, you know, clicking on all cylinders here, I think. And so, it's great to see that we've got a mixture of products that are going to appeal to everybody. This is a really exciting project. You know, you spoke to the fact that you guys go above and beyond. I appreciate that. I know our residents appreciate that. There was a great rendering in the backup material of what it'll look like if you're driving up or down Shaner Road. I think it's going to create a really aesthetically pleasing visual for motorists and for our residents. So, I'm excited about this, obviously. And I wish you guys good luck. And thank you for your continued support of the city of Sterling Heights. So, without anything else, counsel? Without anything else, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck. Always good to see you guys. Great to see you back in person again. Good to see you too, Andy.
We have the original PUD. Should we leave that with?
Leave it with, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is an ordinance introduction. And this is to introduce the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. We have a presentation from our finance and budget director, Jennifer Varney. Mrs. Varney. Oh, sorry, I thought you were going to sit over there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bohorsky, members of council, Mr. Kachubski. Toward the end of the fiscal year, the budget office prepares a final amendment to the appropriations ordinance to estimate how we expend, expect to end the fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth. For this year, general fund revenues are projected to come in five-point-one million or four-point-six percent higher than originally budgeted. The main revenue variances are summarized on this chart. A decrease in property tax revenue of about four-hundred-thousand, primarily due to successful appeals to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. An increase in federal grant revenue primarily due to higher-than-expected receipts from the Public Safety, Public Health Payroll reimbursement grant. This was a portion of the CARES Act funding that was passed on to the city from the state of Michigan. Charges for services is down about $550,000, primarily due to decreased transport revenue of about $300,000, and also a decrease in revenue for police and fire services. And this was primarily due to COVID-19 restrictions at the schools, which reduced our revenue for the school resource officer, as well as revenue we normally receive for police services at football games, proms, et cetera. State revenue sharing is up about $1 million based on the latest projections at the state's May Revenue Sharing Conference. And I have a few slides later to further explain that increase. Fines and forfeitures increased $250,000. Total rest, total revenue was estimated to be about $1 million this year, and this is primarily from court fines. Now, though, this is higher than the very conservative estimates we made at the beginning of the year. We are still down over $1.5 million from 2019 levels of court fines and $2 million less from their peak of $3.1 million in 2016. The extra portion of our personal property tax reimbursement was higher than expected this year, totaling $3.8 million. The remaining revenue to be distributed at the state level was over $23 million higher than the prior year. As this revenue is not guaranteed, it is not considered in the operating budget and is instead used for one-time expenditures. This year, it enabled the city to add an additional $1 million to each to the major roads fund and to the capital project fund, as well as to offset the revenue losses in the Parks and Recreation Fund. And lastly, interest on investments is down an additional $400,000 due to the extremely low interest rate environment. I wanted to offer a little more information as to why our revenue sharing is up more than expected. So as you can see from this graph provided by the state of Michigan, statewide sales and use tax revenue is up nearly $1 billion from the level seen the prior three years. And some explanations for this include a shift in spending habits due to the pandemic, where consumers are spending more on hard goods that charge sales tax versus soft goods like services, concerts, and other things that don't traditionally charge sales tax. And you can see here that total revenue sharing for all municipalities in 2021 is 29.3 billion, or over $3 billion more than 2020. You can also see that the state does expect this trend to reverse somewhat in 2022, lowering overall revenue sharing about 1.4% from these levels. Another factor that significantly affected our financial status this fiscal year is the various sources of COVID relief from the government. So you can see from this chart that that relief totaled over $6 million in 2021, and is a significant reason that we are able to add to fund balance this year. General fund expenditures are 3.3% higher than budgeted. As mentioned earlier, part of the extra personal property tax was used to transfer $1 million each to the major roads fund and the capital funds to fund future projects. An additional $700,000 was transferred to capital projects fund from the CARES Act money to fund the automatic doors and plumbing fixtures. An additional transfer of $750,000 was needed in the Parks and Recreation Fund due to the loss of revenue resulting from the COVID-19 shutdowns. The net vaccination center costs totaled about $500,000, and we expect all of this to be reimbursed through FEMA. An additional $1.1 million was transferred to the facilities fund due to the timing of the completion of the final projects. And savings were seen in the police department primarily due to the timing of the hiring of new officers, lower overtime costs, and lower building costs due to the construction shutdown. And savings were also seen in the public works department primarily due to lower part-time wages and overtime, as well as savings on auto parts. The bottom line is that for the current fiscal year, we will now be able to add about $675,000 to fund balance, much better than we had originally conservatively forecasted in June, in large part due to the significant COVID grant revenue received from the federal government, as well as improved economic conditions over the last year. This will bring our general fund balance percentage to about 26.5% of expenditures at the end of the fiscal year. And the budgeted 2022 use of fund balance next year would bring the fund balance percentage down to just under 25%. The budget for other city funds increased by $2 million, primarily due to the additional cost of $1.5 million in the water and sewer fund, primarily due to higher water usage in average resulting from the dry summer. This also increased revenue, and we are expected to add about $1.3 million to water and sewer fund balance this year. An additional $850,000 of expenditures in local roads, and this is primarily due to the advanced funding of next year's local road projects. An additional $850,000 in costs in the facilities improvement fund for the completion for the final items to bring this project to a close. And savings of $700,000 were seen in major roads due to several projects that were completed under budget, as well as a reduction in the required transfer to pay this year's debt service. And capital project fund expenditures were reduced by about a half a million dollars due to the timing, but most of these funds will be moved forward to next year. Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of this ordinance, which is scheduled for adoption at the first meeting in July.
Thank you very much, Ms. Varney. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to introduce the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2021 fiscal year.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
No. Well, I do want to say, thank you, Ms. Varney. Very nicely done. I do, I'm very happy to see that we are in better position than we thought we were going to be. And we were able to add to the fund balance more than we expected. So that's very helpful and very, very good to see. And I thank you for your time. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, Mrs. Arco.
Mayor Taylor, just have one question through the chair to Mrs. Varney. The expenditures for the vaccination center, does that include both Lakeside and the Senior Center?
That's just Lakeside.
That's just Lakeside. Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Varney. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance adoption, and this is to consider adoption of an ordinance amending Article III, Divisions I, 11, and 12 of Chapter II of the City Code of Ordinances to establish compensation for boards and commissions by means of the annual appropriations ordinance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved to adopt the ordinance amending Article III, Divisions I, 11, and 12 of Chapter II of the City Code of Ordinances to establish compensation for boards and commissions by means of the annual appropriations ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, I think we've gone over this very thoroughly, and I'm fine with what we have.
Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Anyone who wish to speak on the consent agenda or any item on the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is consideration item. First consideration item is to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Teamsters Local 214, Department of Public Works Field Unit Employees for the period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024. We have a presentation from our assistant city manager, Jeff Bohorski. Mr. Bohorski.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, with leave of the city council, if, if you may, I'd like to combine the presentations for the next two items because there's a lot of commonality between the two collective bargaining agreements. So I'll just go ahead unless there's an objection and cover both of them.
See no objection.
Okay. Thank you. The existing collective bargaining agreements between the city and Teamsters Local 214, Department of Public Works Field Unit Employees, and Astme Local 1917, representing the DPW Supervisory Employees expire on June 30, 2021. In anticipation of these expiration dates, negotiations on new collective bargaining agreements were undertaken and produced tentative agreements in early June 2021. The memberships of the DPW Field Unit and DPW Supervisory Employees have ratified the new CBAs, which are now being presented tonight to the city council for approval. The proposed CBAs have a three-year term from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024. Highlights from the proposed CBAs include wages. The membership of both bargaining units will receive wage increases in accordance with the following schedule. For fiscal year 2021 and 2022, a 2% wage increase. In fiscal year 2022, 2023, a 2.5% wage increase. And finally, in the third year, fiscal year 2023, 2024, a 3% wage increase. For DPW Field Unit and DPW Supervisory Members participating in the city's defined contribution plan, now that's basically a 401K for municipal employees, the city's annual contribution will increase from 4% of base salary to 5% of base salary as of July 1, 2021. The city's annual contribution will further increase in the third year from 5% to 5.5%. Now, this is the first increase in defined contribution rates on behalf of the city, I believe, in at least 10 years. So it's a much-needed improvement in this benefit. The city's annual contribution to the post-employment health plan accounts for DPW Field, excuse me, DPW Field Unit and DPW Supervisory Members who do not otherwise qualify for retiree medical will increase to $2,000 annually. Life insurance for those retiring with a defined contribution retirement benefit is being provided to age 70. Now, previously, only members in the defined benefit retirement were eligible for retiree insurance benefits. This will now be extended to cover those who participate in the DC Plan. Again, this is another first for those members. Under residency, the defined area for the residency requirement is being modified to include, to include the entire geographic boundary for the five counties that currently lie within 20 miles of the city. So under the expiring contract, only parts of those five counties were included within the residency requirement. So this will give us a slightly larger footprint from which to recruit from moving forward. The new residency text further provides for a waiver to address unique circumstances which were previously handled by letters of understanding between the city and its bargaining units. Now, I'll touch upon a few of the specific changes for each of these groups. So for the DPW Field, their clothing allowance, which covers work shirts, pants, raincoats, boots, and outerwear, will increase from $300 annually to $500. We also provide a benefit, which is the emergency leave bank, and this addresses situations where the DPW Field Members work extended hours on an emergency situation, a water main break, a snow emergency. And to avoid having them work excessively long hours, they have a bank of time from which to draw upon. So for those field unit members that have the paid time off benefit, so they don't have the sick personal day schedule, but for those with the paid time off benefit, we are increasing their allocation of emergency leave bank from 24 hours to 40 hours. The additional 16 hours may be used outside of the emergency time, which is generally 45, I'm sorry, 48 hours immediately following the emergency. So it gives them a little bit more flexibility to use this time throughout the year. Now, with respect to the DPW Supervisory, they will also receive a one-time 1.25 wage increase. And the reason for that is they had a one-year contract that was expiring, and we could, due to the COVID uncertainty, we could not provide a wage increase that they would otherwise be entitled to. So this is a benefit to kind of catch them up to the wages that they were not able to get for that six-month period. Finally, mayor and council, we would be remiss by not acknowledging the good faith exhibited by both of these bargaining units. Collective bargaining is never easy. Sometimes it's an acrimonious process, but I'm very happy to say we worked very well with both groups, as evidenced by the ability to bring these to you before expiration of the existing contracts. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bohorski. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Matthews?
Good evening, mayor, counsel. I just wanted to speak for a moment about the agreement here. First of all, I would like to echo what our city manager said. It is never easy doing collective bargaining. I just went through that process myself with the school district this year. We also got a three-year agreement, and that's usually a good thing for both sides because you don't have to go through the whole thing for another number of months. With 2, 2.5, and 3%, you know, that averages 2.5% per year, you know, that is an increase, but what I like to think of that as is investing in the people who live and work maybe in the city, right? There's a lot of these individuals who live here, and that increase to their livelihood goes right back into your businesses and to their well-being, which is something I don't think we should discount. These are real people and a lot of our residents who work here. One wonder I had was this larger footprint to recruit from. Are we struggling to find people willing to work in these jobs from within the city limits? I understand for more specialist roles, that may be a problem, but I'm just wondering if that is a more general concern. One other thing that I wanted to ask about was something I didn't hear mentioned tonight. I was looking at the leave practices, and I want to say there was a revision or an update to bereavement leave. An example of how this would work is let us say that I have my father pass away on Saturday, and I'm a Monday through Friday employee. My understanding is I would generally get five days of paid bereavement leave for that to go to the funeral and what have you. However, if it is during the week where a holiday is, say on that Monday, let's say it's before Memorial Day weekend, I don't get that fifth day. So I would get Tuesday through Friday, but not the following Monday, because Memorial Day kind of annuls the one of the five bereavement days. I'm just curious if that is correct in my understanding. And if so, I don't know if that's a common practice, but I'm kind of wondering why that's the case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
Resolved to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Teamsters Local 214, Department of Public Works Field Unit Employees for the period of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Yanez?
No discussion. I think assistant city manager described it perfectly.
Okay. Not sure who got in there, but Mr. Radke?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to know if the assistant city manager could answer Mr. Matthews' question. I think it's a good question. I was curious about it.
Sure. Mr. Bohorski?
Sure. Let me tech handle the residency first. I think your key word that you used, Mr. Matthews, was specialty. And there's no question with regards to fire and police recruitment that it's an extremely tight market. As a general proposition, regardless of what organization you're affiliated with, attracting talent right now is incredibly difficult. COVID, I'm sure, is affecting it, but just overall, there's probably not a week that doesn't go by that I'm not receiving an email from people in the industry talking about how difficult recruiting, you know, for employees is. So when I started many years ago with the city, it was not unusual to get close to 1,000 applicants for a fire recruitment, 800 applicants for a police recruitment. You know, it's very sad to say we're, we're in many cases down to 25, 17. I mean, that's how dramatic it has fallen. And it's fallen for a lot of reasons. It's not a Sterling Heights problem. I don't want to leave that impression. It's an industry-wide problem, and it's something that we, we have to address. Residency, I want to assure counsel, is not going to solve this, but it is a step in the right direction, because they do have different work schedules than, than general employees. So this really is intended to just increase the opportunities. In speaking with a lot of the union officials in the fire department, they're desperate for us to, to try everything, you know, to, to, to draw more candidates. And, and, you know, Sterling Heights has always been a destination department, both for police and fire. I still think it is. You can pick up any municipality and look at their websites, and they're begging for police officers. They're begging for firefighters. I don't think we're in that category yet. But again, we want to do everything we can at this point in time to improve our chances of getting top-notch talent. That's what's really been the key to our success, you know, for the past 50 years. So I hope that answers question one. With regard to question two, Mr. Matthews, you know, the real impetus for the change in funeral leave and bereavement policy was really, our, our policy really reflected on a very old-fashioned concept of funeral leave. The, the contract language really dated back to 25 years ago when a three-day funeral was the norm, and then you had a funeral, or a funeral service on the fourth day. Well, that's just not reality any longer. So we really needed to do an update to reflect, you know, the, the bereavement process. You know, we don't need people at work who have lost a spouse or a parent. So we tried to really give a lot of thought to how we can So, we tried to really give a lot of thought to how we can improve it. Specifically, as to the example, we guarantee, based on the degree of relationship between the employee and the deceased individual, we give guaranteed time off. So, in the case of a spouse, it would be five workdays, starting from the day-to-death. Weekends do not count unless it's your normal work schedule, and holidays, however, do count. So, if you have a holiday that falls in within that five-day period or three days, you know, it does count against the bereavement leave. The other thing that we've done is we've recognized that one of those allocated days can now be used to go to a memorial service. Obviously, during COVID, it taught us that many people could not even have a service. So, what we did is, you know, in the case of a spouse or a parent, you have five days off. You can take one of those days. You can grieve for four days, and you can use that fifth day to attend a memorial service that's outside of that five consecutive days. The last thing I'll mention is, if a service occurs more than 250 miles from Detroit, we do increase the leave to accommodate somebody having to travel to a farther destination. So, that pretty much summarizes it, Mr. Radke. I hope that helps.
I just had one more add-on question, then. Since you were talking about police and fire, we're talking about DPW. We're just standardizing the policy across all bargaining units. I would assume that's what you meant. You didn't say that, but that's what I was.
Yeah, I kind of glossed over that, but we do have, our third group that we're negotiating with, Mr. Radke, is the Police Officers Association, and we have gone over the residency. They are in agreement with that. Have a little ways to go on that contract, but they are in agreement with the change.
That's what I assumed.
Yep.
If I had my way, I know I said this before, I would have every one of our police officers and our public employees live in Sterling Heights, but the environment doesn't really allow us to do that anymore. State law doesn't allow us to do it anymore, so we're doing everything we can to attract candidates while also keeping them local in case of an emergency, so that they can respond in time. And I actually think that this is actually more of a fair policy, because people at home don't know, but we know, almost sometimes it's like you're splitting hairs. Like, this place in San Clara County, you can live, but the place like across the street, you can't live because it's slightly too far. It's just kind of standardized. You can live here, and you can't live elsewhere, and otherwise, you know, I think it kind of takes some of the conflict out of the process.
That's correct. I'll give you an example. I call it the Walt Blessed Circle, and for those who remembered Walt, he's the one who designed the circle. But the circle literally went through the village of Elmont in Lapeer County, and if you lived on the wrong side of town in Elmont, you could not work for us. Really didn't make a lot of sense, so slight changes like that, we hope, will definitely help on attraction.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, Council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is another approval of a collective bargaining agreement. This is to consider approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Afsmi Local 1917, representing Department of Public Works Supervisory employees for the period July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024. Mr. Bohorski, anything more to add to this one?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt, sorry.
Resolve to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Afsmi Local 1917 DPW Supervisory Employees for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just want to thank all members involved in actually both contracts. We kind of pride ourselves that we have a pretty good working relationship with our bargaining units, and I appreciate administration's hard work and their bargaining boards in these two different collective bargaining unions. I appreciate them working together, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Council, anyone else? Mrs. Zarko.
I too want to thank everybody that was involved. I know that we talk about how these negotiations are tough at some time, you know, but I have to say that by the time it gets to us, it looks easy. I mean, all the work's been done, and it's like, oh, we're in agreement on this. We've come to an agreement on something else. So, and when you make it look that easy for us, I know you've done a great job. So, thank you, all that were involved.
Council, anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Bohorski. I know you're very involved in these negotiations, and you do a great job looking out for the city, the taxpayers, but also for the employees, to make sure that they're getting a fair deal. And, you know, our DPW employees are sort of like our unsung heroes. They're kind of the glue that keeps things going here, whether it's keeping our fleet running, whether it's water and sewer. They are really important, and I don't want to go into the last bargaining cycle with the DPW, but it's great to know that this time, things went smoothly, and we've got a good resolution. They deserve it, and so they really do, and so I'm glad to see that this was the result that we were able to get. So, thank you, Mr. Bohorski, and your entire team, and thank you to our DPW employees out there. So, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments. City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Council, I believe we have three appointments tonight. All are council appointments. There are two Citizens Advisory Committee CDBG openings, both to terms ending June 30, 2022. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
Resolve to appoint Sheri Marwady to the Citizens Advisory Committee CDBG to a term ending June 30, 2022. So, it's an appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, briefly, Mr. Mayor. She was recommended to us by the liaison. She's a former General Motors senior buyer. I think she'll be an excellent addition to the CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There is one more opening on Citizens Advisory CDBG.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarko.
Resolve to appoint Kim Jaina to the Citizens Advisory Committee CDBG to a term ending June 30, 2022, subject to the appointee meeting qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Community Alliance, one opening, a council appointment to a partial term ending June 30, 2024. Is there anyone who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Rich Ruba to the Community Alliance to a term ending June 30, 2024, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? I'll take you first, Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. A couple of things. Maybe Mr. Bohorski could explain the rules for the Fourth of July concerning the fireworks tonight. I guess three days within the holiday. Make sure everybody knows the rules and regulations of that. So, the police don't have to be called every few minutes. They will be, but just so we can get some of that down. The Men's Week, is there any activities scheduled for men in this community for that proclamation? Or is there just something to be done? There could be prostate screenings, something like that. I was just wondering. I know it just sounded like, okay, we did this, and he explained about the person Rex. That was it. Why did the City, the Citizens Advisory Committee, become a council appointment and was taken away from the mayor? Some of the most famous citizens of this community have been on that thing. Ray Polichek, he got his name on the building. We all know Rudy, Ash Frye, Gary Shayer, Jeffrey Norvold, Robert Murphy, myself, and a few other people. Just wondering.
I got his.
What that became about. And then, we're going to go back to the last meeting a little bit. Mayor Taylor, you, at the last meeting, came out, and you were proclamating about your works with the LBGT community on their ordinance that residents came out and spoke about. And virtually got enough signatures in about three weeks to get that thing put on the ballot. I'm bringing up today, have you been working on getting reparations for individuals here in Sterling Heights? Have you been putting the same effort forward in that effort as you did in the other effort? I'm not asking for me, because I go for it, but there's a lot of people looking for reparations out there. And a lot of colored folks know something, that every time the LBGT community gets something, it's off the blacks' backs of blacks. We step up. We go forward. We put the effort together, but we don't get nothing. Other people in the communities get things done. So, I was just wondering if you put some kind of effort toward that. You did, for that effort. Mrs. Zarko, at the last meeting, you said that that was just pure hatred. Let's flip the coin and look at the other side. That could be bullying people into believing something they don't believe in. Also, we should let the free market decide this, not the government. The government will mess it up, there's no doubt. But please stay out of this. If you guys haven't learned something, by the last time, that the religious community here in this city is a strong, strong community, and I want you guys to face that again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. Matthews?
It is almost, for me and Troy, the end of the school year. I know many schools are out already. I'm very much looking forward to tomorrow afternoon. And it's almost summertime, you know, it feels like summer has been for a while, but, you know, the seasons do change, and summer doesn't really start until next week, but generations change, too, you know, and what they do to fill their time in those seasons changes as well. Earlier, Mayor Taylor mentioned, you know, when he was younger, he looked up to, you know, Michael Jordan, but his daughter today, you know, looks at somebody on YouTube, a streamer, playing some games, and that's just, I think, a sign of how the times really have changed. Mayor Protenczerowski, you know, her boys, she says, are beginning to games now, too. And the city, I think, is being really forward-thinking and adapting to some of these changes and what people do with their free time, and supporting its residents. We have the Recreating Recreation Initiative for this very building that we're in right now. We have that new esports arena that's going to be constructed in the teen room there. And even the library, through having the very diverse collection of books, really does speak to a lot of our changing demographics in the city. I teach seventh graders right now in Troy, and a lot of those students are feeling very comfortable with themselves because they have books in some of the languages they speak, especially at home, and they can go and share those books and read with their parents together. It's a very welcoming thing. When I was young, that was not as common. I remember, although my grandmother and grandfather spoke French and German, it was never pushed on me to learn that at all, and I really regret not having done that before they passed when I was in elementary school. It was just seen as a bigger deal to assimilate as opposed to embrace the diversity that you had in your heritage. Now, those seventh graders I mentioned, they've endured some hardships, just like we all have. We've all gone through, you know, the pandemic this past year. It's been very difficult on all of us, but our young people in particular, I've noticed this year, had some challenges, more so than the rest of us, because they're so young. They've lost out on a year and change of socialization, just with their peers, getting together with their friends, having dinner at, you know, their buddy's house. It's just not something that they've been able to do, and the younger they are, the more that impacts them. Sometimes, this leads to some students and, you know, young people lashing out when they get frustrated or when they feel alone, because they haven't had the opportunity, like we might expect them to by a certain age, to, you know, acclimate through that and say, okay, what do I do with my feelings during this time? They haven't seen enough of that role modeling, and I would like to encourage our community, which did a wonderful job persevering through the pandemic, to take a little bit of patience this summer, because we will have young people out and about to try to role model for them, and to understand that they haven't had all the experiences that we might have had when we were their age. It's a very difficult and a trying time that they've had. In particular, when you're young, sometimes when you lash out, you look for a group of people to lash out at, and I would think that we are a community that does not pit one group of people against another just because we're dissatisfied with a particular circumstance that we're in. I'd like to think we're more united than that, and I certainly don't feel like the hostility is what it means to be a resident of Sterling Heights. So, let's please be patient, and if you're out this summer at Dodge Park or at the zoo or just in your neighborhood, please recognize that our young people are going through some tough times, and think twice before giving them a glare or yelling at them. Try to have a little grace and kindness. It goes a long way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, and we'll go on to reports from city administration. Anything to follow up on tonight, Mr. Bohorski?
Yes, I'd just like to address Mr. Jefferson's request that we review the fireworks displays regulations in Sterling Heights. So, again, this is set by state law. State law prohibits the city from banning the use of consumer fireworks on the period of June 29th to July 4th. So, on those days, it is lawful to ignite consumer-grade fireworks between, whoops, hold on one second, between 11 o'clock, I'm sorry, 11:40, I'm sorry, 11 a.m. until 11:45 p.m., and only on private property with permission. Spectators must be 25 feet away from the ignition site and 50 feet away if you're a minor. So, again, it's always a difficult period, especially for veterans in our community, as well as those with pets, who are very, very sensitive to those. So, hopefully, you know, we get through it. It's always a difficult process. We get a lot of phone calls during those periods, but again, it'll be June 29th through July 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Bohorski. Mr. Kushebsky, anything else tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Council, any reports or new business for tonight? Mrs. Zarko.
Mayor Taylor, through the chair, too, probably Mr. Bohorski. I want to know if we could get some kind of explanation for the intersection of 15 and Chaney, as far as the light change. You know, it's different at different times of the day. Sometimes, there's a leading left, and then you know that your people will have through traffic. And now, it seems that it was a leading left, and people were only going south, and then everything stops, and then everybody goes north. And that used to be the pattern for going east and west, and they've changed it to go north and south. So, I guess my question would be, I think people are actually confused as to the time of the day, which pattern it's going to be. So, if we could look into that and get an answer from the county as to why they made those changes, and what difference does it make at different times of the day when the traffic is pretty much heavy all day long? And I would really appreciate that. Nothing further.
Okay. We'll follow up on that, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bohorski. Mrs. Schmidt.
Mayor Taylor, thank you. I just want to invite everyone out Friday night to the Farmer's Market Pavilion for one of my favorite nights of the year, the annual cultural exchange. It's going to look different this year, obviously. We're going to be outside. We will have performances, I believe, on the stage, and there will be food trucks available, so there will not be the serving of all the food as typically we have had in the past. But it truly is one of my favorite nights of the year, because it gives us all an opportunity to just learn a little more about each other's cultures and... to just learn a little more about each other's cultures and how much we are more alike than different, I believe. So come on out and enjoy learning about each other. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have to echo my colleague, Mrs. Schmidt. The cultural exchange is one of the best days of the year, and I think we have so much going on in Dodge Park this year, we have to really talk about that, too. Tuesdays, we have Takeout Tuesdays. Thursdays, we have Music in the Park, patios and pines, and the farmers market. And people are coming out, so you should join us. It's a great time. There's food, there's drinks for those of age, there's music, and it's always so good to see all your neighbors, especially after this long, long year we've had. I can't think of a better place to be than Dodge Park. I hope you'll join us. Briefly, this last weekend, I had the pleasure of attending two great events here in Sterling Heights, both on Sunday. First, Macomb County Pride had their Pride Picnic here in Sterling Heights at Farmstead Park. I had the pleasure of going around and meeting everyone and talking with our neighbors, and I thought it was great. In talking with them, they brought something to my attention that I think that we can easily rectify here at council. You know, they asked why, you know, we approved the resolution unanimously to designate June Pride Month, but why don't we fly the pride flag at City Hall? So without objection, I'd ask that if we could do that, because if we could put the pride flag on the flagpole for the rest of the month. Without objection, Mr. Mayor.
I have no objection to it, counsel. Any issue with that? Well, so I, I'm not sure what our, we have three flagpoles out at the city hall, at the main city hall, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we reinstalled the three.
Do we have a flag policy about what flies there?
Great question. I'll have to check on that. I know there's a lot of regulations with respect to the United States flag. It's very complicated, as we've learned over the years, but I'm not really sure.
I think you've got clear direction, though.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, wonderful, and I know that they're going to very appreciate that. And then in the evening, I went to the annual fundraising dinner for the AICC, the American Islamic Community Center here in Sterling Heights. They're going to be building the mosque on a 15-mile road. They're always very generous. They are a great group to get to know. They're our neighbors, and I'm proud to support them in all the work they do here. So join us in the park, join us on Friday at the cultural exchange, join us, and just enjoy this summer, hopefully COVID-free. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mr. Yenness?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to thank our Parks and Recs Director, Kyle Langley, for his presentation today. I was the one who asked that we have the resolution for Men's Health Month, and frankly, it came from someone from the audience several months ago. When I was in the state legislature, I did several of these resolutions and proclamations. I did one specifically with a couple of fellow legislators who were doctors over men's health and specifically prostate exams. You know, one of the reasons I wanted to bring this up is because I really wanted, and Kyle did a great job doing this, highlighting the amenities that we have here in Sterling Heights if you want to live an active and healthy lifestyle. And all you have to do is hang around this place, hang around Dodge Park, or any of the other parks, and you'll see that a lot of our citizens enjoy being outside all year round, and, you know, living that healthy lifestyle, and they're cognizant of their health. We have a population that's getting older. The trend now is to age in place, and in order to age in place, you have to, you know, be healthier. And I think we're all focused on that. And I certainly hope that now that we've gotten past COVID, that in the future, that we have an opportunity to do more for both men and women's health, you know, here through our Parks and Recreation Department. I think that's a great service for the citizens of the city of Sterling Heights. And one final thing is I do want to address the fireworks situation again. I appreciate Mr. Bohorski bringing this up. This is something that I've been working on and working with a number of groups, and you're absolutely right, it's veterans, it's pet owners. We saw the first year that this law came into place, people were, there were literal fistfights breaking out in the streets between neighbors because, because of noise. Veterans, they have to leave their home over the Fourth of July weekend because of the loud noise and PTSD. The trash. I remember going on a 911 call when I was a firefighter here in Sterling Heights, and it was an actual house fire set off by a bottle rocket. And I remember turning the street, and you could not see the pavement in the street. It was completely covered in paper from fireworks. And people using fireworks didn't clean up their mess. So all I'm, all I'm asking everybody is please be cognizant and courteous of your neighbors, of the timelines, enjoy yourself, be safe, but think about your neighbors when you're letting off these fireworks, and again, be safe. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yenness and Mrs. Koz.
Thank you. In regard to the cultural exchange, Mr. Bohorski, am I correct in saying that the food is not free this year, that the food is going to be supplied by the food trucks?
That's correct.
And will have to be purchased?
That's correct.
Just so that the people don't come expecting the
Right. Good point.
Gourmet display that we usually have. And one other thing, today, we did a ribbon cutting with the Go Slow with the Police Department. Their project this year, or I should say this summer, is to slow down the traffic, make sure that people understand that they need to drive slow, and especially on Metropolitan Parkway and Ryan Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Koz. Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I did want to just make a couple of comments. As a nurse, of course, men's health is always an interest to me, and I have many men in my family, many men who are my friends, and men don't tend to, men do not live as long because they tend not to take as good of care of themselves as women do for the most part. So this is a good way to highlight that, highlight not just prostate health, but all levels of health, heart disease, diabetes, even, even some of the minor things, mental health. These are things that men don't always seek treatment for in a timely manner, and it's good to highlight it and just to help normalize the act of seeking help to them, because it is sometimes not as easy to have that, just as, it's just tendencies and normal behavior. Men, men are strong and stubborn. Women are strong and stubborn, too. But it tends to be something that we have to highlight in order to help make sure that that gets a little bit more impressed upon that population. So I'm happy to have that. And secondly, I just wanted to say something, and it's not even about Sterling Heights. I had the pleasure of attending on Saturday the unveiling of the Gold Star Military Family Gold Star Memorial in Clinton Township, just our next-door neighbors. And I was planning to go anyway, as a, as a mother of a Marine, a wife of a retired Air Forceman. This is something that it's just, you know, you have to stand in solidarity with these families, not knowing until last, just the week before, that one of the honorees on that memorial was actually a son of my good friend from high school. And we're from Grand Ledge. We're like west of Lansing, little bitty town, but her mother-in-law sought out a good location for this, and he was, Sergeant Lilly was honored. So that was so, it was very, it was such an impact. I was lucky to have Mrs. Yarko and her daughter there with us as well. Many people from the county, many people from all over the state came just to honor the, the Gold Star family's gold star. Of course, I'm sure you know, but it's, it's when a family member has died serving their country in the military, the left, the family is then considered a gold star family. So they've lost a loved one during that loved one's service to the country. Gave the ultimate sacrifice, gave the ultimate measure. And so if you have an opportunity, it's in Clinton Township, it is in their, in their city center over there on, goodness, what was it? Romeo Plank, thank you. Over by, right by Resurrection Cemetery. So it is just beautiful, and it's gorgeous. It's granite, it has a cutout of a soldier saluting with the names. You have to see it. So thank you for letting me get on my soapbox a little bit, but I would really encourage you to do that. And thank you, counsel. Mayor Taylor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sarowski, and thank you to the council for all the great comments tonight about everything that's going on. One final reminder, the cultural exchange this Friday. Very much looking forward to it. Hope to see you there. Hope to see you Thursday night at Music in the Park, and hope you just have a great Fourth of July weekend. We will see you back here in three weeks. Until then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Before, I just want to thank Mr. Bohorski for joining us tonight. Great job.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again. We haven't seen you in a while, so thank you.
And, and, very well done in Ms. Riska's absence.
Yes. So thank you, thank you.
We've got some fill-ins tonight, but the great thing about, I think the great thing about our city employees is that when one goes down, another fills right in. You know, get on my soapbox. I remember there was a time when we, we thought like, oh, well, we're losing Brian Baker to the county, and he's going to be totally irreplaceable. And I don't think she's here anymore, but Jennifer Varney has not missed a step. She's incredible. She's so on top of things, and, you know, I think, and it's just the way it is here in Sterling Heights. When one is on vacation or has obligations somewhere else, another fills in, and we're very lucky in that regard. So thank you both for filling in very well this, this evening. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.